Hello.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll see if it stays on.
Oh, we're gonna have to expand.
Yes. Hello.
Yeah.
Testing, testing, testing.
Okay, so.
Can you hear me? Okay.
For those online, can you guys hear?
Those online, you can hear me.
Yeah.
Thumbs up, I'm on.
Ash Chiroditsa.
Aja.
Ono was illa.
Test, test again.
Alright, thank you.
Test, test, testing, test. Testing. They can hear me now. Okay. We are gonna go ahead, we have three six people participating, so. We are going. Um. We are going to go and start, I call this meeting to order at. Twelve fifty-nine. They already say next time.
Good, Jenna.
For those who, um, looked over your agenda there. Um, invocation. Um, can I have, uh. Shama. Jamie. You. You clear for us.
No, they leave there.
Thank you, Shama. I'll try to, we'll try to use the microphone as long as. Yeah, with the battery, or, oh, but not key, so that's all. Alright, approval of agenda. I'm going, um, yeah, agenda, that's all. I need a motion.
Oh.
Okay. Priscilla, right? Oh. Okay. Okay. Yay. Second. Okay, I'll go with Henry. This is my song.
Hey, you don't look bad.
Hello. This one is different. Which is Tom. Which one was your song?
Um, General Law.
Channel two. Henry Sinatini. Testing, 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 testing.
I'm not, I'll have no better.
Testing. Seven. That. Oh. Questions, comments, concerns about their agenda? Yeah, the agenda, I think. Uh, agenda. So, yeah. Hello. Testing. Channel one, non but.
He's on.
Testing, testing.
What's your answer, Tiffany?
Resolution.
Resolution.
Eleven.
One hour and I see, can I test that in?
Oh. Okay.
Yeah.
It's not coming out. So, we'll just talk loud.
One ninety-two. On the Facebook, that's okay, let's see. That kind of lost. It does sound like savings.
Okay, that's saying, they like savings, okay. Okay, then, any other questions, comments, concerns? And. Any addition? At the no, eh, yeah. Proceed to approving the agenda. All those in favor, raise your hands.
Yadi Smith.
Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. And. Twenty.
Raise my hand.
Yeah. Ten.
Raising my hand.
And there's ten.
Twenty. Alright, so I'm gonna go ahead and go down the line for the people who called in. Henry, yeah, that's clean. Virginia Crank. How do you vote?
Oh.
Thank you.
Oh. Oh.
Thank you. Victoria Goodman, how do you vote?
She should vote. And then, uh.
Sophia Grissom, how do you vote? Ben Thompson, how do you vote?
Oh, Yadi Smith.
Yeah, thank you. Nicole Currie, how do you vote? Thank you. Three on one.
Three online, so twenty-three?
And oppose? Abstain? Well.
Three on one.
Alright, approval of the agenda passes with twenty-three, approval, zero opposed, three abstained. Approval of the last regular chapter meeting minutes, June thirteen, twenty-twenty-two, which you also have. I need a motion. Okay, Jamie. Notisting and Benjamin, are you second?
Arco.
Okay. Benjamin Thompson, second. Comments, questions, concerns?
Ben Nada.
Okay, so poster on the bulletin?
No.
Motion. Motion.
Uh, Jamie Notisting. Shape motion to post that on the bulletin and. The media outlets, or the media, yeah. So, we don't need to read it, have it read out to you? Okay.
And you.
And Benjamin. Let, let me get this and then we'll go back up. Okay, approval. Call for votes, uh, those in favor. Raise your hands.
Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Ten, one.
Twenty.
Twenty-five. For those online, Henrietta Queen, how do you vote? Virginia Crank, how do you vote? Victoria Goodman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Sophia Grissom, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ben and Jimin Thompson, how do you vote?
So, what are we voting on right now?
We were voting.
The last meeting minutes.
The last meeting minutes.
Oh, Arco, yes, yes, yes.
For you, okay, thank you very much, and Nicole Currie, how do you vote? Thank you very much. Votes in favor, that's total of four.
Okay.
On one.
Oppose? Abstained.
One, two. Two.
Okay, and two abstained, okay. Okay, motion passed for the last regular chapter meeting minute to be posted on bulletin and media outlets, which is Facebook and, uh. Uppi Kid website. Uh, twenty-four approved, zero opposed, and two abstained. And then, we have, uh, motioning party. Priscilla Sosie and Henry Sinatini. Uh, we have one. Additional, um. What do you call this, resolution? Let me read it to you, it's. Approving and supporting requests from community members to disassemble the old crossroad store. Building at their own risk and expense. They understand that. Ta, the Uppi Kin chapter. Or the Navajo Nation will not be liable for any incidents that may occur. Can we add this to the resolution, uh, to the agenda? Okay. Yes, Jenna. Okay, thank you. Okay, now we go on to presentation. I don't have, we, I don't think we have any of this, uh, Unified School District. Online. And then, that number D, New Mexico Social Justice Equity Institute. Jonathan Hale kinda wanted to be a part of our chapter meeting, but he's not online. And he has a resolution that he, um, that is online. I mean, that is part of our, uh, it's number.
Part of our agenda.
Yeah. It's number. Eleven.
Last.
Approving and supporting the Saru chapter declaring racial and ethnic health. Iniquities and income inequality in the northeastern Arizona and northwestern New Mexico to be a public health crisis. That's what, um. His, uh, resolution is. Made on that side of the state. Okay, it's pretty selfless, planatory. With that. Okay. If they do come online, do you want to give them time to report? No? Okay. Alright, so now we get right into business. All business. DBK twenty-two twenty-two, one-six-four, zero-zero-one. Accepting and approving the May twenty-two budget report.
Oh.
Do you want, uh. There, so report is first.
Okay. Budget for May. Number one, general fund, total balance is six thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-eight cents. Personnel travel, five thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. Trust fund and land claims, thirty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Summer youth employment is six thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. Housing discretionary, seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. Local governance grant, LGA, twenty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. Chapter official stipend is fourteen thousand, four, fourteen thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars. Twenty cents. Scholarship, general fund is seventeen thousand dollars. I'm sorry, seventeen hundred, yeah. Seventeen hundred dollars, scholarship claims fund is six thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. Public employment project, PEP, forty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. Veterans is four thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Emergency is one thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. Now, wholesale. Oops. Now, the sales tax, eighteen thousand eight hundred and ten dollars and four cents. Capital improvement outlay, six thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. Agricultural infrastructure fund, seventeen thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-eight seven cents. Unhealthy food tax, sixteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and eleven cents. And then, the solar, uh, fund is seven thousand, seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. Brings us a total balance of two hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-four cents.
Hey, I need a motion.
Oh, Ben Thompson.
Hey, Benjamin and Henry. Second is Henry. From the G. Questions, comments, concerns? There any questions, comments, concerns about the May budget? Go ahead.
Personal travel, is that perfect now, that we can do it?
Uh, chapter travel?
Yeah.
Chapter staff and official?
That's all, I mean, that personal travel, yeah.
Personal.
Okay. See, I'm there to make.
Oh, okay. Yeah, probably have to.
I guess that was an oversight on the chapters on my side. But apparently, the personnel travel is not five thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. According to the updated budget is fifty-one thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
Oh, wait, month.
Yeah.
So. Rather than having, that was a type of problem possible in putting this one in, but, um, it's a total of fifty-one thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. And sixty-four cents, which is available in the budget, not five thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. Then you have a total breakdown. Which is. Right here, if you'd like to review it. But it basically goes over the salaries, wages. The, uh, medical expenses. Workman's comp, annually expense, basic life insurance, 401K, pension, and insurance.
That's where the personnel wages are in number two. For the two employees. Their benefits, their wage.
So, they're calling the personnel travel?
It says. Personnel slash travel.
Okay.
Hey, travel, da, na negi? Oh, you know, just, just a thought, I don't know. Kudorlke, da, kijel, kushin chida. Ah, da, ya, denek, gas, wa, denek, di, yotka. Ah, re, na, na, don, le, de, runda, kushin, ilna, ta, runda, is. Why don't they carpool? Over there, share rooms, cut down on some of the expenses so we can have more money for something else.
Yeah.
Personnel shouldn't even be on there, they can provide their own funding.
Since the person.
I know, we are all in difficult times, I know it's all difficult times and everything, but. Gas prices are high. This is, this is for work. So, trunk gas, na, ni. Kudorl, that's real, that's neither. Oh, 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 just a thought, you know, I'm not criticizing nobody or whatever, just, just a thought.
Well, the answer to that is, it says personnel slash travel, but there's nothing in the, in that budget for travel. It is mostly salary, wage, the FICA, the Medicare, Suda, which is the social security, I think it was. Um, group insurance, uh, workman's comp, um. Annually, basic life insurance, and know all the benefits that an employee gets. That's all that's budgeted in that. There's none here that is, uh, specific to travel.
So, what can we split that one, so be more. Easier to understand personnel and travel, that way.
I think, I think that it, it is split up, it's just that, that part of it has to be taken out. That part where the slash travel is, take it out and put personnel. Benefits, wage and benefits, something like that.
Yes. It makes more sense.
Yeah.
Personal and, personal and travel, no, it is. That's something different, that's not, you know, what we're talking about. What you're talking about is making sense.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll recommend to change those, uh, titles on the, the spreadsheet. The budget. This. This one's here, uh, that's, that's what they have in there, but. Uh, under the breakdown, it, it shows it as number two, which is Navajo Nation General Fund. That's what it shows on this thing here. And then, this one again, is what it outlines, how everything is broken down. In that, uh, sheet.
You can view this on your phone too, it's called the wind system.
Yeah. I'm not so sure if we can use this one, but. This is what was pulled from there.
Yeah, the budget, the pouch, budgeted and everything that's in there for, for view only, for anyone. There's public records. Records by entity, and we're towards the last. You can look at the budget. It gives you a detail.
Yeah.
It gives you a detail, detail for what each line, where the fund goes, everything. So, that's public records. Woven internet, integrated. Oh, is it called, well, woven internet, integrated.
Yeah, all in there, yes, what's that?
Yeah, woven integrated Navajo data. That's where you go to view it, and to see where it says, public records. That's where you go to view the budgets for each chapter, all a hundred and ten chapters. This is only the, uh, I think it's chapters, I think the divisions are also in there. But if you wanna view anything that the chapter is doing a, across the whole nation. That's where you can go to look at it.
But, um, the one that we're looking at is just an overview where we're at right now. And again, with that budget right here, fifty-one, fifty-one hundred, it type of, because we didn't add an extra zero in there to include, we didn't add the extra zero in there. Whereas right now, that budget for number two is fifty-one thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-four cents.
Okay, any other questions?
And here's the breakdown, because we want to look at it.
Are there any other questions?
I'm good.
All right. Call for vote? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hands.
Ben Thompson, good.
Yeah?
Twenty, twenty right now, so.
Yeah.
Virginia Crick says, yes, I can.
A free aggression, are you voting in the affirmative, or do you have a question?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Nicole Curly, how do you vote? Nicole Curly, how do you vote? Tiffany Curly, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Oh, what's in favor, thank you, Lauren. With that, we have point four.
Victoria Goodman?
Victoria Goodman, how do you vote? Henry Oder Clean, how do you vote?
Oh, the, the, can I say you got me?
Oppose?
Okay, that's five in favor.
Okay. Abstain? All right then. TPK two zero two-two dash one six four dash zero zero one. Um, passes with twenty-five in favor, zero opposed, three abstain.
She's gonna unlock it, I asked her to unlock it. Oh my God. You have the checks?
Jane.
That one froze, this one froze on me, but I'll get it. Just keep it for now, and then I'll do it. I told her to unlock it. We'll just read it off of what. Okay, I'll try to print it. Okay, but read this one off of this, I didn't print the one. And that one is going to be processed at three, they're going to come in at three.
This, the June one.
The June one, I'll print it out for you because it froze on me. Is it in there? Because I didn't see it. This can just go off of each page. No, okay.
All right, on to new business.
All right, sorry, it looks like we had a power glitch, but hopefully everyone's still here.
Oh.
Moving back to.
Back on, Ben's back on. Bitch.
TPK, there's zero two, two zero two-two dash one nine two thousand zero zero one, accepting and approving the June two thousand twenty-two budget report. With that, I have that here, as it, as the website is not currently unlocking the June report, which is why you only see May. So, I will go ahead and read the, um, the budget report here. The general fund activities, the general fund, so chapter activities, general fund is eleven thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. Again, eleven thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. Navajo Nation General Fund, which is number two, is forty-two thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars, thirty-nine, thirty-eight cents. Forty-two thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars, thirty-eight cents. Land Claims Trust is two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Supplemental youth employment funds is negative ten thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety cents. Again, negative ten thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety cents. Housing discretionary fund is seven thousand, I'm sorry, seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. Seven dollars fifty-seven cents. LGA grant fund is twenty thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and four cents. Twenty-eight thousand seven, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and four cents. Chapter Tyson Fund, eleven thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty cents. Again, eleven thousand two hundred and ninety-four and twenty cents. Scholarship General Fund, we're at seventeen hundred dollars, again, seventeen hundred dollars. Scholarship Plan Fund, six thousand five hundred and twenty dollars, again, six thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. PEP Fund is forty-one thousand sixty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Again, forty-one thousand sixty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Veterans Fund is four thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Four thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and four, seven cents, seventy-eight cents. Emergency Fund is one thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. One thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. Navajo Nation Sales Tax, fifteen thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. Fifteen thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. The CIP Fund, six thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. Six thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. And solar fund is seven thousand seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. Seven thousand seven hundred, I'm sorry, seven thousand seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. Unhealthy food tax, eleven thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-six cents. Eleven thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-six cents. The Adjunct Cultural Fund is seventeen thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. Again, that's seventeen thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. With a total balance of one hundred, one hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-eight cents. Again, that's one hundred and ninety-eight thou, I'm sorry, one hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-eight cents.
Okay, I need a motion. Okay, Dale? State motions, second, Laverne Plake. Questions, comments, concerns? Okay, comments, questions, concerns?
Now, a person that can hear and understand, I like to see, yeah, so. Can I get a copy of this?
Yes, you sure can, it's just, um, the chapter has the request for copies, so we can just go ahead and get you one of those, see if we can fill that out. Just give you the copy like this to.
Sorry, Chris, sorry, you can.
Yeah, anytime.
Or you can go on that website, yours anytime.
But then he said, you can run it out.
Well. Well, the thing is that, right now, that budget item is locked for some reason, so the personnel window rock has to unlock it. Typically, once we get these things done, they should be posted. So, once it's posted, you should be able to get in there and take a look at it, right?
Yeah.
That's the reason why I asked. There's always a glitch on it, we, we can't rely on the new technology or something like that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just make a suggestion. Um, whatever, stuff like this. Just have everything, uh, so we can look at it, I mean, I heard the report about being read off, activated by third one, which kind of lost all the work. It would be much better if I'm looking at it, and then she can go through, and then, and then if I want, you can log on, but maybe that, you know, some of us don't share on the borderline of, of being computer literate and, and not being smart as my smartphone. So, I'm more comfortable, unless you want to write notes on it, so. I understand that younger generation, they're always going to try that. So, nobody's there, except for a kid, if I've been back and gathered up there. You can, you got, I think, you want, hold the information in your hand, looking at it. So, that to me, that would be, I would be more comfortable, seeing that as it's being read off, follow along. It would be nice.
Go ahead.
Same thing, and, and at school, we still teach those. We get to say our, our combat language from online. In the mathematics, uh, all the, everything, it's still written down. So, we get to say, so online, online, look at that. That's like, to me, to me, it will be lazy, lazy, so.
Yeah, well, the thing is, we, we didn't have this technology, or we, we didn't get. For the past ten years, we've been trying to work on all of this so that it can be shown during the chapter meeting. So, before, A, it wasn't shown on here. But we started to get it known, to get it to work, to where it can be shown. We're just giving you information to tell you that this, this is also where you can go to go look at. Auto, like he said, you can come into the office and ask for a copy of it, you'll have to fill out, um, request for copy. And then, um, that, that way, um, they can give you a copy. So, those are the options we have available. I'm not saying that this is the only way, I'm saying these are options you can al- also go look at. And then we can also try to add, to see if we can get a part of the chapter meeting to where you have it on paper too. We can also do that. One time, we did do it. But sometimes, depending on what day these are run, do they run on a specific date? By the time the chapter meeting comes, sometimes we don't have the information right away to get, to get it all, um, to you guys. That's why we tried to put them on here, so that at least you do see it. At least you did look at it, and then it's read so that i- it's on record, part of the meeting saying, yes, we did read it out to the people. I understand what you're saying, but, you know, sometime internet, that's supposed to help us, sometimes has glitches. They, like the internet, don't know, like right now, it just glitched and kicked off, um, the, the colors. So, we have to put it back online. So, sometimes that happens. But we will certainly try to add it to the papers so that you can have a copy of it. Yeah?
So, in other words, are you telling us that you can already check it because I mean, our budget? You don't have copies of it here that we have to rely on? Wouldn't you have to tell us how much got spent?
No, what he's saying is that, all this is inputted into the computer system here, it's all inputted. But we don't, we do make copies because she runs it, she runs all the copies, and that's what these are right here. You can come in and request a copy for that, but in order for it to be on the wind system, it has, they have to do it. They have to unlock it and say, okay, we put it in there, so now people can view it. A, it's, it's them.
So, there should be no problem, we have everything here to be run off, and they're needing that, no, no. Not try to, not depend on that.
Yeah.
So.
So, that's, that's.
Easy to do then.
Yeah, that's the part I'm telling you about, is when there's glitches, it won't show on here until they get it done.
The thing I also wanted to mention was, I understand, but we're trying to minimize our, there's, the chapter is also trying to minimize the number of copies that they try to take out, because toner, EBA, that costs like four or five hundred dollars for one color. Because the industrial machine that they have in there, it only can produce so much, and then when we're making copies like these, kind of, you're adding more to the cost of that. And so, that's the reason why I sort of printed, we have our meeting minutes for last month, it is a total of eight pages altogether. And so, to try to guess, further along our use of the machine, I wanted to make sure that we have sort of a minimal, minimized copy of the, the minimum. I wanted to make sure that we have sort of a minimal, minimized copy of the minute. So we're not taking up eight pages for ten people in here. That's eighty copies right there. And so that's one thing, uh, I, I can, we can go ahead and try to add this on it. Just know that it's going to possibly be added, um, expense to their, the chapter.
But yes, you can certainly request a copy. Okay, any other comments? Concerns, suggestions?
How much is set aside for the papers and the office supplies?
I can get that. Standby.
Yeah, oh.
Yeah, we can hear you. We just, I, I gotta get that information here, so, you know, I'll tell you what is budgeted for that. Uh, actually, who is this?
This is Martha Tate. I am, I'm on with my daughter, Christiana Tate Lefter.
Christiane.
I got a comment. I think it's good that you can go in and request. I agree with you guys that a lot of this paper, if you were just to print them out and stack it right there to where people can look at it, that's just an investment in trash anyways. You know, you can look up on the internet, if you want a piece of paper, just request it. It's a good idea, yes. And, uh, to be wasteful like that, I don't think, I don't think that helps nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Hey, he's looking at the information here that was requested.
Yeah, just having the minutes posted on the chapter website and on the, um, social media and having all of those information of the minutes would be more beneficial because everybody has a, um, access to that now. That would be mi- um, nice. And then just coming in and getting a copy of the minutes, that makes it, uh, limits the amount of paperwork that has to be done. So, that's, that's, that's good. I mean, there's only a few people that really want a copy of the minutes. But if it's posted there, or if it's on the website, the chapter website, or on the, um, where they can access it, then that's, um, transparency. Because right now, there really is no way of getting a copy of the minutes anywhere. I don't, I've never seen a copy of minutes on any website. Or even at the chapter, when you walk to the chapter, it should be posted up there on the bulletin board. You don't have a bulletin board anymore. So there's really no transparency.
There. So, thank you again, Martha, for that question. Just to let you know that it is posted on the website. So, if you are seeing it through Zoom, I can show you here real quick as to where you can find this. Again, when you go into Google, you'll go ahead and type in, uh, topic in chapter, and then you should be able to see the topic in at nowochapters.org. From that point, you'll go ahead and go into the TBK meetings. And then once you select that, you should be able to, um, scroll all the way down to the bottom. Um, and then there you will find the, uh, chapter meeting agenda as well as the chapter meeting from last month. So, as you can see here, you'll see the agenda for June, and then you'll see the agenda for the meeting minutes for June as well. Um, and so, as you can see here, it, it, it does show the meeting minutes there. But, um, and. Okay, but in that, in that, in that aspect, you should still be able to see that online. Um, but looking at the budget for the office supplies, we have a total amount of twenty-five thousand, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars budgeted in for that as well as, uh, two hundred, two, two thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars budgeted in for the telephone, in fact.
Okay, I'm on the TBK website. So, I'm on the topic in website, TBK, um, topic in nowochapters.org. So, where is the minutes?
So, like I said, up in the top left-hand, on the right-hand corner, you should see the, uh, TBK meetings and services. And then from that point, you should scroll all the way to the bottom. And then you will see the, uh, the last meeting minutes for June. And then again, again, if you want, you request a copy from the chapter house. Again, you will still have to fill out that form to request the copy for that.
Okay, yeah, I don't see any minutes. All it says is the agenda, the agenda. Okay, I see the minutes here, here. Okay, um, one other thing is you, on the website, you have it posted that your meetings are scheduled on the first and second Mondays of each month. But outside, I've, I've asked some of your student workers to update that. We still have the announcement on the first Sunday and the third Sunday of the month.
Okay, we'll bring it up to the chapter.
Okay, and then the survey, the survey of when do people want these chapter meetings? I don't recall anyone doing any of those. Was the majority of people wanting it on Mondays? Is that why it changed to Mondays? I mean, how, how are you getting community input on that? And then?
Um, Martha, we're talking about the budget right now. So, let's stick to the subject of the budget right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, any other comments and concerns, because we're taking a long time on this subject?
I just want to say, yeah, it's a good idea to, now we know we can download the budget in our life. Because then, right now, we're, we didn't see it. There was a glitch in it, that's all it is.
Yeah.
Be prepared next time, say, just in case we all have a copy, so people can see it.
Yeah.
We have like four or five weeks, so we can share it, it's a meeting, that's all.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, concerns, suggestions. Um, I'll go ahead and call for the vote for the budget. Those in favor, raise your hand.
Ben Thompson, yes.
Henryetta Clean, how do you vote?
Martha Tate and Christiana Tate approve.
Thank you. Mark, Virginia Crank. How do you vote? Victoria Goodman, how do you vote?
I approve.
Thank you. Sophia Grisham, how do you vote?
I approve.
Thank you. Nicole Curly, how do you vote? Tiffany Curly, how do you vote?
In favor.
In favor. With that, six, so twenty-six. Eighteen plus six? Two plus six, yeah. I think it was twenty of you.
Twenty-four? Four, two?
Yes.
Twenty plus six?
Yeah.
Twenty-six. Oppose? Abstained. How many of you have now?
One. What's that? Two, three.
Four abstained. TBK two zero two two dash one nine two dash zero zero one passes with twenty-six in favor. Approved, um, zero opposed, and four abstained. Number two?
TBK two zero two two dash one nine two dot zero zero two, accepting and approving the monthly cash receipt deposits for May and June two thousand twenty-two in the amount of two thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Madam Chair?
Okay, motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve this item as read.
Okay. Martha Tate. I'm on quote Martha Tate Chief.
Oh.
Moves to approve this item as read. Are you second, Jamie? Okay, and call for the vote. Those in favor?
Ben Thompson, yes.
She moved to, to approve it. Eleven here?
Henrietta Crank, how do you clean? How do you vote? Virginia Crank, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Victoria Bigman, I'm sorry, Victoria Goodman, how do you vote? Sophia Grisham, how do you vote?
I approve.
Thank you. Ben Thompson votes in the affirmative.
Yes.
Nicole Curly, how do you vote? Thank you. And Tiffany Curly, how do you vote?
I approve.
Thank you. Martha Tate, how do you vote?
I approve, and Christiana approved, too.
Thank you.
Oppose? Abstained. TBK two zero two two dash one nine two dash one, uh, zero zero two passes with twenty-seven approved, zero opposed, three abstained. Number three?
Number three, TBK two zero two two dash one nine two dot zero zero three, approved and adopted. It's up to King Chapter FY two thousand twenty-two supplemental budget for the Summer Youth Employment Project Fund in the amount of thirty thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars to replenish the Summer Youth Employment Project Fund use sponsored by the chapter administration.
Okay, motion? Renelda? Willie? Uh, second by, who did I see, Henry? Henry Sinazin. Questions, comments, concerns? Remember you saw that negative?
Yeah, that's for.
This replenishes that.
Summer Youth.
Madam Chair?
Yes? Go ahead.
If we could do, um, if we could ask for the council to approve this in March, if we can make a resolution and have them approve it in March and add it to their annual budget.
I think, I think that two months ago, or last month, February, we passed that in February, telling them to get this budget out right away.
Okay, maybe for the next month, do, um, reaffirming that? And add them, tell them to add it to the, um, the Navanation's overall budget as a, a permanent funding.
Okay, we can probably. Martha? Martha?
Yeah?
We'll, we'll put that as part of a, a resolution next month.
Oh.
Because fiscal year is going to be coming up. We'll already put on that as a resolution for them. So remember that, yeah. Okay, remember to do that. All right, thank you, Martha. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, no, hey, yeah, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands.
Ben Thompson, yes.
Martha and Christiana approve. Approve?
Thank you.
Approve.
Thank you. Henrietta Clean, how do you vote? Victoria Bigman, I'm sorry, Victoria Goodman, how do you vote? Sophia Grisham, how do you vote?
I approve.
Thank you. Nicole Curly, how do you vote? Tiffany Curly, how do you vote?
I approve.
Thank you. With that, six.
Six or seven?
Six. Is that where you're at? Two.
Oppose? Abstained. TBK two zero two two dash one nine two dash zero zero three passes with twenty-eight of, an approval, zero opposed, two abstained. Okay, number four?
Number four, TBK two zero two two dash one nine two dot zero zero four, minimum resolution, TBK two zero two two dash zero seven three, does zero zero six. Approving and supporting the Sehassen Fund transfer of sixty-five thousand from Topi, from the Topikin Powerline Project to Housewiring Project due to increased in costs to approving, to approving and supporting Sehassen Fund transfer from Topikin Solid Waste Transfer Station Project, keep it up, we can housewiring project. Sponsored by the chapter administration.
Motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve.
Excuse me?
I move to approve this resolution as read.
I'll second, Ben.
Okay, uh, hold on. Our motion by Henry. Martha, are you seconding? Martha, are you seconding it?
Okay, Mr. Ben said he'll second.
Okay.
Over here, over here.
Yeah, emotion.
Yeah, we got it. So we got second one, who's second?
Tom Benjamin. And then Martha is, says to approve it. Because it's just a change, amending it. Sophia? Or did you have a question?
I got a question.
Okay.
So you're taking part of the power lines that would lead to the, to improve the wiring of the housewires.
The first resolution is Sihasan transfer of sixty-five thousand from Powerline Project Housewiring to increase it, but within the Sihasan Fund, that is for power line costs, housewiring costs, and waste, transfer waste station, or waste transfer station, those three are under the projects, under the Sihasan Fund. A call, when the cost went up, the money that was already for housewiring and power line, eh, the NTUA used up that amount. So the only money that we have within the Sihasan Fund is money that is, that was marked for the transfer waste, waste transfer station. So what happened was, we needed to take money from this waste transfer station and then put it to the housewiring. So it's within the same fund, underneath the same fund, and it's just from one, the one project to the other project.
How we can do that, is it, come here, where we are trying, is that the same one?
The, this is for a waste transfer station to be built and stopped, and the land is withdrawn on this side. So that's money that's still a project on the Sihasan that has to be started.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So call to vote? Those in favor, raise your hands.
Hey, Henrietta, well, Henrietta Klein, how do you vote?
Martha, approved.
Veronica Goodman, how do you vote?
Approved.
Thank you. Sophia Gresham, how do you vote?
I approve.
Thank you very much, Ben Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Curly, how do you vote? Tiffany Curly, how do you vote?
I approve.
Thank you. Martha Tate, how do you vote?
I approve.
Christiana?
Christiana, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Six. Six.
Seven.
Seven.
Opposed? Abstained. TBK two zero two-two dash one nine two dash zero zero four passes with twenty-nine approved, zero opposed, one abstained. Number five?
Approving and supporting the Tapiqen chapter staff and officials annual work session for strategic planning, budget formulation, and annual certification trainings. That'd be TBK two zero two-two dash one nine two dash zero zero five, sponsored by the chapter administration.
Motion? Dale? Second?
For the chapter meeting.
Jamie, notice me.
Seven.
How much questions, concerns? Go ahead.
For this resolution, it says, approving and supporting the staff, beneficial work session for teaching planning, does that mean that they'll be going over there, or, and like you said, that we're trying to implement technology, why can't, why can't you just have staff, whoever that needs it, do their training, sit here and look at the screen and all that stuff, driving over there? The reason I'm saying is that a couple years ago, I mean, I forgot what it was for, but I mean, all one person, she, she could go out and we had each other, she had the main of Porcaseta, and the whole entire staff was at Twin Arrows. And my question to that, or the dog, why can't they just send one person over there? Uh, hey, that bring that paper work, how she know, I'm bringing back that teacher staff over here, or, like you say, we're trying to promote technology, why can't we just do that here? If, if we're concerned about the cost of ink and all that, that should be part of the concern to be sending that entire staff over there. So that would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
And why does it have to be at Twin Arrows? Can it be at some chapter house somewhere? Where's, probably free? Free?
I give my chapter house.
Well.
Fun apart, we should all have a room at Arrows too.
I'm three seven.
Oh, I'm, I'm committing, neither Twin Arrows or Harashin casinos, neither, oh, what chapter are you not, my law meeting bond that you create up?
Hold on, I have to give you the floor, hold on. Mr. McGay has one.
And we all combined, one that has to do with money.
Well. Who can do that for six on down, if that's what, okay, I got, there's a motion and a second one. So, having that other chapter meetings, it depends on what chapter is busy or not, and there's a lot of chapters that are not open. We're one of the only, we're one, we're the only ones who are, we're the only chapter that's fully open and operating on the Naukun Nation. Sahai, yeah, they close for the week, or they're only doing two, two, three days a week, but in K, yeah, we're fully open to operate. One of the reasons why they say to take it that we want it off the chapter is, it's busy. One person can take care of the customers and everything, but people start coming and say, okay, 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 a coach, a training bond, it cuts into that. And then deep budget formulation and stuff, that's for, up, fiscal year is done in September, the end, September thirtieth, this month, this year, twenty twenty-two. So we tried to get these budgets, projects, anything that has to do with the chapter for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, to get it all together and formulate a budget, even though ASC or Duendera or DCD says that we can't advocate for our, for our budget, but we're still trying to tell them, hey, look, this is what we need. In order to do that, we have to talk about, hi, hi, what projects do we have, how much is left for that project, how many, how much do we need to advocate for, and stuff like that. So it's, it's a session that we go through that is kind of tedious, we have to be sitting in an uninterrupted, talking about some of these things. And I'm just saying that because for the past, past ten years, we tried it either way and that one. The question for why at Twin Arrows, because Twin Arrows is Naukun Nation land. President Nez says buy local, buy Naukun. But the thing is, Duendera don't listen to their own advice. They take their business and everything, conferences like this, anything like that to Albu Priki. We don't have land in Albu Priki. But we do have land, Twin Arrows, because Naukun Nation bought it, because Naukun Nation bought that land, it's Naukun Nation. So we're trying to keep it local, even if we go to Flagstaff, Naukun Nation is not going to get that money, Flagstaff law. If we take it to Page, Page is going to get that money. So we try, this chapter tries to stay with Naukun, spending money on Naukun, rather than going out of places like that. So those are some of the reasons. The, the casino and the gas station is on the Naukun Reservation. No, um, the casino and, um, gas station, all that land, K'chiko on this side of the road, yes, in Hopi land, N'wachiko, Hopi land. But where the casino, where the road is, all that, where the, the gas station is, all that, all where it's all developed, those are now, that's Naukun land. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, uh, a question about that, about, who, who's the one that tells you to go to that training? Does the, does Naukun track, does it go to that training? They tell you how they, or they want to try the, 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 or is it coming out of our own way?
That comes from our own budget that is already set as part of the budget when the fiscal year starts. Because every year we have to do that. Every year we have to have a budget, a budget, this session like this to, to update everything. There's another one, and part of this is also the updating the five-year plan. So the five-year plan for this chapter updates every year. A call that we're trying to get ahead of things and things that are coming, we're trying to get ahead of that so that we can, we can know what can come or what can be budgeted. The, um, what was the other one? Who, who said Naukun Nation wants that? Or DCD, which is, um, develop, Division of Development. AA, AA, Community Development, AA, she's, as chapters. And then because we are certified, they, even non-certified, they don't, they don't give that money, they just give, say here, this is the budget, and within that budget is what we have to budget forever, even though they say we have leeway and have, can make decisions. They don't, they, they tell us, well, this is what you're going to do.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, we go, not telling the Duendera, cause of going this session, can we, like we said, like you just pointed yourself, why can't we go, go to some inspirational talker, we can hire him or get the, a website, pay for it, then you can see if people can learn it, but then we're just going on our feedback, on our Duendera, telling them you got to go to this station? And they just wanted to say, hey, pay for it.
Yeah, it's, it's some, it's pretty much, we have like one, one hand tied behind our backs sometimes.
I understand, uh, as a, as a money, not for any representation, but as our community, as our elected officials, we trust you that you handle this community's funds wisely, and I'm assuming that for our training, you would explore every option of saving the money, minimizing the expense. So, again, I point to the technology, can we utilize that for training instead of going over there? Like I said, at that time I was here, the whole staff was over there, and I, and I asked you, you know, but we had, in that tourism. And I, and I saw, not that I still, we have a partnership with Tourism Office here, and I said, I would understand that we had an office for tourism, eh, yes, that's a valid reason for this staff to go training for tourism. Doesn't, pretend to us, maybe just send one person instead of the whole staff, and we're talking hotels, mileage, meals. So I, as a registered voter, I have complete, complete faith in you guys that here are in charge of the community's money, we have elders that, we have homes that need upgrading. Ah, ah, the, make sure that they, here are, here are the money, the community's money gets spent most, more on, on our community members. Should I, you know, you're the guy, your own money, today you want to get the most for your money, it's the, you, 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 you take the ways and like, you sometimes going to have to give up a, a trip to the movies so you can buy your kids something that they need. So that's how I see, in this scheme of work, that you guys are doing that for the community. Yeah.
Okay. People that, go ahead. It's just for us. They, to be honest, Santo is certified. Where do they go to do their, this budget training? They go down to Scottsdale. That's where they do all their businesses like this. That's what they do as a certified chaplain.
Now, I agree with the gentleman, the people, uh, about the money, they don't, they didn't remember, you see, I need, first and after, so, so, on and on, those kind of meetings that I mean, occurred, you know, in return, you know, you know. you know, and then we, uh, so, I agree with CIB. That's, that's, and, uh, oh, oh, that's, that's, down here, and there's a, no, we got no money. We did not, not share this money.
There's only one correction. We don't get budget, we don't get budget money based on your CIB. It's based on voters of this chapter. So the more voters we have, the more money we get. Like Tuba City, they have over 18,000, 2,000, 3,000, that's the voters. So they got a big chunk of money. So the Shiprock, so the, um, some of these bigger places. Okay, where the last time that, uh, we looked at voters, how many voters we have here? There was barely 700 people. But we are a community of over 3,000. So best, I P A, voters, who is voted here? Nana, um, but that, that's the one correction. Jamar? Yeah, this is, this is one of the only trainings that we have. There are other trainings that are scheduled, but so like David was saying about tourism. The reason why we went that one time was to find out all the information we can because we, Navajo Nation, Navajo Nation, way back into 50s, 60s, on the, make this whole big, as tourism. As a, uh, yeah, a tourism place. So if Navajo Nation decided to do something out here and they put up a building, we don't really have much say because they already passed a resolution saying that this is all under them. So it was like, wait a minute, that's not right. They, like I said, were a community of more than 3,000 people. So that, that's the reason why we went there to see if we can benefit from having tourism in our area. And then on the other point too, is to find out how tourism is built up. We found out that, that, that's the reason why they were under park and service. Recreation, parks and recreation. So we kind of find out information. So now we know these things, so we tried to hear a resolution according to that.
No, we, that's public, those two, the, uh, where the steps are made, right? Gas, to, logic. This should be public knowledge too, right? We can look that up on the internet too, right?
Yeah, information, um, the Navajo Nation, the Navajo Nation, um, website on there, uh, where was it? There's a per diem. Let the per diem change from a couple of years ago? Or was it last year? Per diem changed how they do that. No what I, every mile was considered, every day was considered. But today, if I was to go somewhere, there's a set limit for the first and last date. There's a set limit for it and in between, uh, um, meals and hotel. And if you were traveling in your own vehicle, you'd get mileage. But if you're carpooling, the person who's got the vehicle is the one that claims the mileage. And then if we are, um, if people go in the chapter vehicle, they don't claim mileage at all.
So another, no, another question is, these trainings, I got every year.
For this strategic? For this particular training, it's set every year?
I mean, it's the same structure. Is it the same one or is it?
It depends on what's coming, what projects are coming. It, it depends on that. And then it also depends on who's new. No chapter official, one of the chapter official might, might, might be a new person because of certain circumstances. So, but it's set every year to do the strategic.
So I heard the operative word, chapter official, let's keep it at that, not the staff. Chapter officials, they should be the ones who need, we don't need, not the staff. Staff can stay here and address the community needs. That's possible.
Chapter manager has to go because he
Are they below him?
The, the TBK, uh, the administrative assistant has to go because she does all, um, she's the one that does the budgets and all of the information for that. The planner goes because he's the planner. The other, at that time that you're talking about, those are the only three that were working besides the office assistant. We didn't have a maintenance, we didn't have any of those. So it was, those three are the important ones that have to go from the staff. Okay, that's a powerful vote. All right. All those in favor, raise your hands.
Courtney Curly, how do you vote? Tiffany Curly, how do you vote?
Favor.
Thank you. Martha Take, how do you vote?
What was the resolution?
The resolution was number five, approving and supporting the Tapiqin for staff and officials annual work session for strategic planning budget formulation, the annual certification training.
Um, I approve.
Thank you. Christiana, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, 24.
A pause? Abstain? TBK 2022-192-005 passes with 24. Approved, 0 opposed, 6 abstained. Number six.
Number six, TBK 2022-192-006, requesting the nomination council and the budget and finance committee, nomination office of the president and vice president to ensure fully funding the Division of Long-Term Care and Services to ensure our, all senior centers are operating at full capacity and has enough funding for providing at least one meal a day for the entire fiscal year, sponsored by the chapter administration.
I move to accept this resolution? Or approve the resolution?
Uh, are you motioning?
Yes.
Oh, oh. Holy Father, thank you, David, for welcoming what we have, Lord, and thank you, David, for the rain that we receive. We are blessed in here in our community that we receive rain here. Thank you, Lord, thank you for this movement and let's, let's, uh, have for, for all officials here, our, our leaders here. Comfort and wisdom for Christ's name, amen.
Second?
I have a question. My brother at the Jerry Center.
Okay. No, Martha, Martha is the motioner. Yeah, she said to approve this one. So let's go ahead and approve that one. Eight, nine, 10, 11 is open to put together after this resolution. Seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, and there's 12 too. There's a number 12. But they were on six. I need a second though. You second? Oh, yeah, true. Okay, Jamie. Okay. Questions, comments, concerns? Well, Martha said to vote, to move to approve this one. So all those in favor, raise your hand.
Oh, Madam Chair?
Oh, yes.
On the senior centers, I know that they're always short on supplies. It's across the Navajo Nation. They're always fundraising or asking for donations for, um, plates and utensils, to-go plates. Um, why isn't the, um, why, why isn't the Navajo Nation senior or the, whatever, the aging center providing all of these supplies?
I like to know that too.
Can we, can we, can we demand that they be funded from the Ara Fund too? Or the, um, I mean, not, yeah, the pandemic fund? Because everything has to be in to-go plates. They should have all those funds for to-go plates and utensils that are pre-wrapped.
As far as we know, for off of fun, it's been, go ahead.
See that Martha, that's a good, that's a good, um, comment right there. So we're talking about what the NOS regional chapters were wanting to, with that recent legislation that was passed with the legislation 20-, was it 22-0086? That is something that, um, we'd like to bring up to Herman Daniels. Being that if Navajo Nation president signs that legislation and puts it into law, we could possibly ask to maybe utilize some of the ARCA funds that are being distributed to the council delegates to maybe utilize that funding there. So I think that'd be a good idea. But I agree, maybe having that included in their annual budget to, to at least fully fund the senior center would be great.
Hey, any other comments, questions, concerns? That is true.
Mom, what's his name, Jim?
What was her name?
Jill.
Jill.
Jill, Jill.
That's the diversion director. He's from Navajo Mountain. So the ones that you're talking about Martha, we can add it to August's. The demand will start demanding in August.
Okay, I mean, yeah, it's, it's, it's across all the senior centers. I mean, here in Shinley, there, there's a big old box for donation. I'm like, they shouldn't be asking for this. If they're asking that to-go plates are to be used, even over there, um, with when my, she said, the Jamie August, we're always running out of, um, utensils and to-go plates. And I, I know the chapter helped us once and then the other time I just went over to Walmart and bought whatever to-go plate they had. And I brought that in and that was enough to cover them for the, for at least a month. But I mean, that, they shouldn't have to be doing that. If they're saying to-go plates, then they need to be provided with all of these to-go plates and, um, the plastic utensils that are sealed. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Martha, then going back to voting, how do you vote?
I approve.
Thank you. Christiana, how do you vote?
Yeah.
With that, 25.
A pause? Abstain? Yeah, you did.
Yeah, we did.
When Martha interrupted, that's what we had.
You guys are just looking at the hand.
Okay. So that'd be seven. Okay, TBK 2022-192-006. Passes with 25 approved, 0 opposed, 7 abstained. Number seven.
TBK 2022-192-007, requesting supporting the Kanta IEC membership to amend the Kanta Unified School District Indian Education Committee bylaws to include Tapiqin chapter, to have one member to represent the community and its students of Tapiqin. Sponsored by Karen Kay and J. Francis Kanta IEC.
Okay, now.
Yeah, should we, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12, right?
Yeah, 12, we can reach 12 to you.
Oh, yeah, we don't have that on the agenda right now.
Yeah, they approved to put it on the agenda, so.
No, it's not physically on the.
Not physically. Oh, motion is made by Dale Tate, right? To compile, compile, combine resolution. You want me to read? I mean, I'll read out the resolution.
Okay.
Just the whole parts. Resolution. TPK twenty twenty-two, one nine two, zero zero seven, zero zero eight, zero zero nine, zero zero oh, zero one zero, zero one one, and zero one two. You have a second?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, he'll read all the resolutions.
TPK two zero two-two dash one nine two dash zero zero seven requesting supporting the Kianta IEC membership to amend the Kianta Unified School District Indian Education Committee bylaws to include Tapiquin chapter to have one member to represent the community and its students of Tapiquin. TPK, TPK two zero two-two dash one nine two dash zero zero eight requesting the tribal utility authority in TUA to upgrade all outdated transformers, electrified poles, and utility equipment to serve the community of Tapiquin chapter. TPK two zero two-two dash one nine two dash zero zero nine accepting and approving the Tapiquin chapter public employment project policies and procedures as recommended by the nomination department of justice. TPK dash, TPK two zero two-two dash one nine two dash one zero one, zero one zero approving and supporting the extension of the Tapiquin planning, chapter planning for another six months for FY twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. TPK there's two zero two-two dash one nine two dash zero zero one, sorry, zero one one. Approving and supporting the three chapters declaring racial and ethnic health inequalities and income inequalities in the northeastern Arizona and northwestern New Mexico to be a public health crisis. TPK two zero two-two dash one nine two dash one zero, I'm sorry, zero one two approving and supporting requests from the community members to disassemble the old crossroads store building at their own risks and expenses. They understand that the Tapiquin chapter or the nomination will not be liable for any incidents that may occur.
Okay, question?
On the TPK, I'm very equal. Zero one one, a lot of the list.
Yeah.
Confirming on that one, what's going on on that one?
Okay, I think we have Jonathan Hill online. Mr. Hill, this is the chapter president. Are you online?
Sorry, six dot news, sir.
Is this Mr. Hill? Calling for Mr. Hill.
Voice.
Want me to read the whole thing? All right, the resolution that was submitted by Mr. Hill, a resolution of the Tapiquin chapter, TPK two zero two-two dash one nine two dash zero zero dash zero one one, approving and supporting the three chapter declaration of ethnic health inequities and income inequality in the northeastern Arizona and northwestern New Mexico to be a public health crisis. Whereas pursuant to, to nomination code section three alpha, the Tapiquin chapter is a duly recognized certified chapter of the nomination government as listed at eleven nomination code part one, section ten, and vested with the authority to discuss all matters affecting the Navajo people and its nation. And pursuant to nomination code section one, Bravo, the Tapiquin chapter is vested with the authority to review all matters affecting the community, make appropriate corrections when necessary, and provide recommendations to the Navajo Nation and local entities, agencies, and appropriate actions. And three, the COVID- nineteen pandemic has highlighted and exacerbated racial and social health inequalities nationally and locally by disproportionately impacting communities of color and Hispanic Native Americans and African American communities of the northeastern Arizona and northwestern New Mexico counties are experiencing higher rates of COVID- nineteen cases, hospitalizations, and more recently deaths deaths when compared to Caucasian communities. By low-income communities in northeastern Arizona and northwestern New Mexico counties defined by census tracts and zip codes and experiencing disproportionately higher cases numbers of COVID- nineteen. COVID- nineteen demographic data is reflective of historic health inequalities nationally and locally across racial and ethnic groups as well as across the income levels. Number seven, Native Americans in northeastern Arizona and northwestern New Mexico counties have higher rates of premature death and higher child infant mortality rates than other ethnic and Caucasian people. And Native Americans lose an average of five point one years of life expectancy due to these factors compared to the average of one point seven years gained for Caucasians and Native Americans in northeastern Arizona and northwestern New Mexico counties experiencing disproportionately disproportionately higher rates of death due to cardiovascular disease from two thousand and one compared to Caucasians. And the ten Native Americans in northeastern Arizona and northwestern New Mexico counties have higher rates of preventable hospital stays and higher and lower rates in mammographic screening and flu vaccines than other races. Eleven property rates in northeastern Arizona and northwestern New Mexico counties for two thousand and eighteen were twenty-three point six percent for Hispanics, twenty-eight point one percent for African Americans, twenty-eight point five, I'm sorry, thirty-eight point five percent for Native Americans, and fifteen point one percent for Caucasians. And twelve, public health research and practice have long recognized racism, discrimination, and income inequalities as fundamental causes of health inequalities. And thirteen, systemic racism, racism in poverty negatively impacts the social factor that determines health, the person's health, including access to safe and affordable housing, active recreational opportunities, well-paying jobs, quality early, quality early childhood education, clean air and water, and healthcare and health insurance. And fourteen, over fifty counties across the nation have top resolutions focused on acknowledging the racial drivers of health disparities and supporting policies and in the initiatives innovating, oh my God, what is that? Initiatives to reduce these inequalities. Number fifteen, the United States Office of Disease Prevention and Health Promotion and American Academy of Pediatrics and American Medical Association, American College of Physicians, and National Partnership for Women and Victims, the American Public Health Association, and the National Academics of Science and Engineering in Medicine have recommended that racial discrimination negatively impacts health outcomes and now therefore be resolved that the Tapiquin here by declares racial and ethnic health inequalities and income inequalities in the northeastern Arizona and northwestern New Mexico counties to be public health crisis. And one directs the northeastern Arizona and northwestern New Mexico County administration to support and a countrywide strategy to address health inequalities, including expanding the health department, health equality program, and to include other county departments that provide services impacted to health of individuals and families. Be extending the health tribal membership to include more representation from counties experiencing health inequalities and from those advocating for improvements, continuing the health department's racial and ethnic approaches to community health programs. Reach a grant funding initiative of the CDC to reduce chronic diseases disproportionately impacting Native Americans and Hispanics, be collecting, analyzing, reporting public health data by age, race, ethnicity, gender, disabilities, neighborhood, neighborhood and other demographic characteristics, including adding such data to the Navajo Nation and local community health assessment entities ensuring equity in COVID- nineteen pandemic response and recovery. Number two is all right. Number two, pledge to promote health qualities through all entities and their board policies in northeastern Arizona and northwestern New Mexico counties and budgeting to enhance the delivery of human and social services, economic development, and public safety. Number three, promote policies that are well-recognized to improve public health for adults and children from county communities of color. Number four, advocates locally, regionally, nationally, for relevant policies that improve health in communities of color and low-income communities. Number five, advocates for economic development projects and opportunities designed to increase employment and income and opportunities as the modality modality to reduce the event, eventually eliminate incoming equality supports and expansion of continued, continuing education, job training, and workforce development programs as a pathway to economic self-sufficiency sufficiency and sustainability for northeastern Arizona and northwestern New Mexico counties residents. And there goes the certification. Then the citations are listed below. Madam Chair, the resolution has been read.
This one is a long one. But it's concerning the residents that live in the Shiprock area, I guess, that's the northeastern corner. Shiprock area and I don't know what you go across on New Mexico, the, some of the scattered a lot of lands or the ones that are out there. There's some on this side near Ave Creek, I just don't scatter lands, but this is pertaining to them that healthcare and stuff like that have not been equal to all when Native Americans go over there, I guess they're kind of being set aside. They're not doing that much for them or something like that. That's, I am guessing that's the reason why. That they just want a more equal fair share of the healthcare that is provided to the Navajo people out there.
Hello, Sima.
Oh.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, Jonathan Hill. Oh, Jonathan Hill, listening in, so. So, the Mexico Social Justice and Equity Institute. Altseshi, it's easy to do, you give a bit of a wait. And she didn't let me get hot, I could never get it. Though, I could, I could, I could. Though, I could, I could. And I get, I love it, I love it. I do, I do not, I see, I see. Oh, Mr. Olsonboro. I don't like that. So, I've been at, I go, I saw, I'm a nice, I see, I see. I just, I need, Southwestern Utah. I don't, I don't, I don't. Health crisis, racism. He has. Our policies. I don't. I. Do. You. Do. I. Don't. He. I. 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 So. Respirators. He. Now. So. He. He. I. Indian Health Services, Department of Interior, Department of Health and Human Services. He. He. Oh. I. I. It. Thirty thousand dollars. He. And when the. Insurance. Do. I. He. Nurse. She. And when the. And when the. He. She. The first Americans. He. And when the. He. 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 When the. He. He. When the. I. So. Mental health. I. Now. He. He. So. I. Now.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Comments, questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, hi, Mr. Hill. Um, Jimmy. The care wasn't there. I. There's no. I didn't. In the. So. Um. For. By. Or. He. He.
Oh, she had. Hi, get it.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Call for a vote. This is for all. One, two, three, four, five, six. Resolutions.
Oh, I know. On that last one, when they need that. Substance is an idea. So, are they going to do something with that building? Or? It says, but we're not reliable if something happens, and I agree with that. The building is so. First responder.
It's part of it, but they, that building is, um. They need to go, so that's the reason why that last one. But EMS, they're still, they got, what, two point three acres or something like that, that they have on there, that's where they're going to build.
What are they building there?
Emergency Medical Response Center, or something like that.
Oh, okay.
Building, yeah.
Public safety.
Public safety building. Sorry, Earl. There's going to be a public safety building. And within that plan, I think they're going to have availability of it.
There's going to be the same, like the same, like the one that's marked with.
Oh, yeah, Twin Arrows.
Firehouse. So, it's going to house the fire department, EMS, and. Big store and the.
Oh. That's not on this one. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hands. Don't leave either.
I approve Martha Christiana.
Ben Thompson, good.
Andrea, who?
Virginia, approve.
You. Victoria Goodman, who do you vote? The addition, how do you vote? Nicole Curly, how do you vote? Tiffany Curly, how do you vote?
I approve.
You.
Oppose. And abstain. Okay. All the listed TPK, two zero two two dash one nine two dash zero zero seven, dash zero zero eight, zero zero nine, zero one zero zero one one, and zero one two. Passes with twenty-nine approves, zero oppose, and three abstains. All resolutions are acted upon and therefore we go on to the next one, so our report.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yes. Okay. Okay, the first report is from Herman Daniels, our council delegate. Is he on the line?
Good afternoon.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Hard, I don't wish that I was here, but I just barely got on the line because of um, Resources and Development Committee meeting, so I was on that line. I didn't, but I. She. It's a reported. I don't know, but I. Report. Um, not. Um, council delegate report, don't know, L D A, report, it's up in Small Canyon. So, I. Um. I. I don't know. The great July, Fourth of July, she's. And he, and he, not he, the great, the. Ah, what? So. I don't. Uh, I'm. When. I see. The great. Oh, it. But. I don't know. Um, yeah. I'll. But. I. About. I. Oh, yeah. I just. Now. He. She. But. Um, I. Eh, don't let. But. So. I. Every year. I'm. But. I don't. Before season. But. It. And. I. He. He. The great. The. He. The. 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 He. I. I. She. But. I don't know. The. Now. The. The great Office of the President. Number of new positive cases every day, the great, in the hundreds. So. So. I don't. Uh, quite. North region. Now. She. He. She. The. Oh, yeah. But. She. I. I don't know. He. He. To. I don't know. He. She. And when the. Never. Division of Transportation, he stay in. He. Oh, yeah. I. I. The great. I don't know. He. The great. The. I. 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 He. So. He. He. In. Stay in. So. He. I. She. I don't. He. But. So. Oh, the great. Best. I don't know. But. Legislation. The. The. The legislation, zero zero eight six dash twenty-two. The great. So. Oh, my. When. He. The. Yet. So. He. And. He. There's three amendments. But. So, within our region, um, can he. He. Twenty-two million. He. Twenty-two million. He. He. Now. The great President. Now, the nation's president, Jonathan Nez. She. The great. Nez. She. The. I don't know. Well, she. He. Line. I don't. He. Well, she. It's. Resolution, CJN twenty-nine nineteen. That's. Yeah, CJN twenty-nine twenty-two. He. That resolution number. He. But. But. Twenty in favor, two opposed. He. So. He. Oh, no. I don't. He. And. The. Now. So. I don't. Uh, the. Twenty-two, twenty-two million. Two hundred and. He. He. So, um. Let me look for the breakdown, he. He. And he. Uh, breakdown, he. But. All the. But. He. Um, so. Um. He. Um. Okay. Yeah. There's. But. Thirty-four million. Thirty-four million, five hundred and twelve thousand. Five hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty thousand. When. So. I don't. He. Electric connections. The great. I.
Um, that is, I don't know, I just thought, I don't know, I don't know, I just thought, I don't know, I just thought, I don't know. Now, I think, I think committee, eh, best, I don't know, eh, eh, I don't know, I don't know, I just committee, I mean, I don't know. Eh, the, the, both who are here, they're like, eh, they, eh, look, point Marina, though.
Reclamation. I asked you to, in the city, to nil, eh, do I, no, can't, any better than that, it, let's. Long ago, but it, I know, it, could only, but, 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 it, in, ah, who, a team.